Please. Ms. Evans. Ms. Smith. Mr. Velkoff. There we go. Okay, Ms. Evans, we're still waiting on you. So Kathy is going to be running this next work session.
And I've been told that I need to be meaner than I was in the HR work session, so be forewarned that I'm going to take my lessons from Ryan. Kim's going to kick it off, then we have some new slides that Sloan will go over, and then we'll get into the question and answer. Kim?
So one of the first things I wanted to do is I was listening to some of your debrief the other night and talking about having the folks in the box join Sloan and the number of them and whether to ask questions. And so I did kind of ask a few of them, and they are proud to be there was the overarching, this is the work, and they really like being there. And so I just wanted to start by, there are some people up here, but there are also some people from DSS and ISD that we would just like, I would like to thank because they are very proud of this work and very proud to be here Thursday night and today, so if we would start just by thanking them.[88.00][88.00](APPLAUSE). And then I also would like to thank their work because on Thursday night, I really believed you started the right conversation and were asking the right questions to help us dive into how do you as a board help us continue the work that we need to pay attention to. We did task Kathy Oliver with quite the task, so you'll get some of her thinking, but we still have some next steps, that data that will get to you in the future. But she is always remarkable in how fast she can think about things in a way that we haven't been able to capture before until we asked the question, so I'd like to thank her for that rapid work. And also for the group that's in the back as well as up here for taking those questions and really being able to dive into it again today. So Sloan is going to have, and I'm going to leave this chair empty because we still may have some folks that need to come up and speak, but he's going to give you an overview. When Kathy presents some data slides, I also want her to bring up the fact that there are more tests changing. So to Mr. Stork's frustration that we'll get something and then the state will change and we'll have a new benchmark, we're going to have a change in how we test kids this spring that I want you to be aware of, so Kathy's going to speak to that a little bit as well. So with that, Dr. Presidio.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Dockery, and good afternoon. Last Thursday night, which seems like very recently to me, and I'm sure it does to you as well, I did have the opportunity to introduce Rich Polio briefly as our new director of ESOL Services, but I failed to mention Marcy Neal is our new director of Counseling College and Career Readiness, so I'd like to do that now, and she came over to that position from her position in Instructional Services as a coordinator. So what I would like to try to do this afternoon is really preserve almost the entire time for your questions and discussion, but I wanted to share just a brief bit of information. As Dr. Dockery mentioned, we did pull some additional data, and Kathy Oliver will present that in a second. But before I do that, I wanted to just go back to one of the threshold slides that we discussed at the beginning of the presentation on Thursday. And the reason I'd like to do this is two different board members on Thursday evening kind of asked, you know, what's the so what of this presentation? There's a lot of data here, there's 112 pages of information and analysis, you know, from a board member's perspective, what should we make of this? What are the overarching themes and implications? And this slide was really meant to try to frame, in our view, in Instructional Services, what we think some of the foremost pressing issues really are. So I just briefly want to highlight on this one more time and then jump into some updated data slides on the achievement gap. The first issue on here, as you can see, related to the raising of the rigor on the SOLs, and we saw the impact of that in terms of student achievement, but from a board member's perspective, you know, what should you make of that information? And what can you do in your role? And again, I would just really applaud you for your efforts thus far at working with the state in an advocacy role to try to create additional flexibility in our accountability system. And as I mentioned on Thursday night, we're starting to see some changes, which is really good. I think now is the time not to let up, but to continue to press harder in that regard. And I would encourage you to do that, and we are happy to help in Instructional Services any way possible to help you with that. And the other thing that I think we can do is by showing the state alternative systems of accountability. So as we're in the process of developing our portrait of a graduate and the strategic plan, trying to show the state that, you know, local jurisdictions can create their own local accountability systems that can substitute for state and federal accountability. So I think those are some of the major things that the board could do to support this work. I'm going to skip past the achievement gap and come back to that last. The third area here is around professional development, and we talked about, you know, the need to get professional development closer to the classroom. And, you know, one of the biggest changes with our reorganization this year in terms of Instructional Services is moving the Office of Professional Practice from the former Department of Professional Learning and Accountability into an Instructional Services. And by doing that, we now have all of our kind of content expertise situated within Instructional Services. So we have our reading specialists, we have math specialists, those things that are funded through Title I, our ESOL specialists, and now our instructional coaches from PLA, all in the same house, if you will. And we're working really, really hard to ensure that those folks can work together to provide effective job-embedded professional development. So continuing to think about how we can support that work, because not all schools have the same amount of resources when it comes to specialists. The last column on here is talking about increasing student learning opportunities, and I think that this was an area that I highlighted on Thursday night where I think we've done a really good job. Despite increased graduation requirements and funding problems, we found ways to continue to be innovative through STEAM, through expansion of world language, through expansion of counseling, college, and career readiness initiatives. We've found ways to be innovative there, but I think with our portrait of a graduate, this is a time again that we need to really continue to challenge and push ourselves and really think about, well, what does the future of learning look like? And what could it look like in this country? But what could it look like if Fairfax was really taking the lead in that work? So thinking about things like digital transformation, how technology can change teaching and learning, just as a few examples, and we've mentioned others, thinking about new programs to serve English language learners. Could we think about how to serve them more effectively? Could we think about how to get additional career opportunities available for students? So there's a number of things that I think we can continue to do there as well. The last area that I want to touch on is closing the achievement gap. And I think it was Ms. Heinz who kind of asked, you know, she pointed out that the information on our website, the link was not accurate. This is a graphic, and it does link, and I'm not going to go through it now, but it does link to the accurate updated information that's available on the website. And for each of these areas, we refer to them as drivers, but these are evidence-based areas that would support student achievement and closing the achievement gap. When you click on these, you will get a link to division plans, resources, so there's research that's available for the schools, there's sample strategies and goals and activities and things that the schools can access there. So it does provide the schools with a lot of additional information. But I think one of the fundamental things that we engaged in discussion on Thursday night was really around, you know, what can we do as a board to close the achievement gap? And I would just point out that there are actions that we can take to support each of these areas. And the first that I would start with is this idea of ready-to-learn in the orange circle down there, kind of on the bottom right-hand side, because it follows on the conversation we just had about expanding preschool. And I think that this board is very well-educated on the research-based strategies to close the achievement gap. We've done quite a bit of work on that just since my short tenure in the division. And over the weekend, I pulled out an article that we had looked at at a board retreat in the summer of 2013 from the University of Pennsylvania, Andy Porter, and he talked about the evidence-based strategies around closing the achievement gap. And there are lots of strategies, but there are only a few that have a positive evidence base, and preschool is one. So this is something that we can continue to do. Following on that, one of the other strategies from Mr. Porter's research was around relationships, having high expectations for students and being able to communicate that very clearly and offer them support structures in the classroom. Thus, we have a relationships driver in our plan. Along with that, thinking about having the, really, the most effective teachers in every classroom in the neediest schools is something that we can do. So those are evidence-based strategies, and everything in this plan is based on evidence. I would just point out family and community engagement. There's lots of things that we can continue, that we have invested in, that we can continue to invest in. We can continue to expand our activities like our HIPAA program, home instruction for parents of preschool youngsters, our early literacy program, family literacy. Those are things that have an effect. We've seen the positive beneficial effect of those programs. Those are things we can continue to do. Same thing is true with our college and career readiness programs, expanding those opportunities, expanding opportunities for students, minority students, traditionally underrepresented students, first-generation college-going students, to have supports to take them through the college application process, from filling out financial aid and scholarship applications, visiting college campuses, and getting that kind of support. Academic support, I think, is an area that we really do need to pay attention to because our principals are seeing some really good results with some of the programs we've put in place, like the AVID program at the middle and the high school level. We have a number of requests from schools to fund more sections of AVID. That's a program that provides academic support for traditionally underrepresented students. And then access to rigor, again, you know, really pushing on and thinking about, do we have the opportunities to ensure that all of our students have the same educational experiences regardless of the community within Fairfax County where they reside? So thinking about programs like our Young Scholars Program, access to things like advanced math in all of our schools. So I think the way that this program plan has been organized for closing the achievement gap gives you some good places to look in terms of thinking about policy and funding strategy that you can take to support this work, and I'd be happy to go into some of those things in more detail. But with that, what I would like to do is turn it over to Kathy, who's going to share some of the data that she created in response to some of the board's questions to look at the achievement gap data a little bit differently on Thursday night.
This graph is very similar to the one that you saw on Thursday night. The only thing's different about it is it has a few fewer years' worth of data. The other one started at 2002. In order to get this data quickly, we started with 2005. The student achievement goals are based on pass rates, and when you look at pass rates, you say yes, the student passed, or no, the student didn't pass. So you take the student's scores and just look at them as yes or no. And when you look at this, you see that the Asian and white pass rate on the reading one dropped 11 points. No, it dropped more than that. I'm...
It's 2014.
Yeah, I've got, okay. According to this graph, the drop in the pass rate was substantially more for our Black and Hispanic students than for our Asian and white students. Instead of looking at pass rates, this is the same number of years, but instead of graphing the pass rates, we've graphed the average scale scores. And if you graph the average scale scores, you'll see with the new standards, it was really the Asian and white scores that dropped more than Black and Hispanic scores. And if you look at the bottom line, the Black and Hispanic pass rates, you can see, I mean, the Black and Hispanic average scale score, you can see why, because those average scale scores hover just around the pass rate. So a small change in the average scale score makes a large change in the pass rate. So the Black and Hispanic scores, if we read across the bottom, we've got 433, 448, 428, 391. The cut for pass or not pass is 400. So because those scores are all close to the difference between passing and failing, then a smaller drop in the average scale score results in a much larger drop in the pass rate. The Asian and white scores, they dropped as well. They dropped even more, but because their average pass rate is around pass advanced, they can drop a long ways before it actually shows up in a drop in the pass rate. So I'm not saying we don't have an achievement gap. We certainly have an achievement gap, but the way we report the goal of passing, not passing, it makes it look as though that drop was worse for Black and Hispanic. And those students who are close to passing, I mean, we have a good chance of our programs impacting their scores and their moving back to the pass side. We always lump the white and Asian together, Black and Hispanic together, but this is that same graph that I just showed you right here when it looks just at them individually, and you can see the same thing happened. It was really the higher standards, which raised the ceiling, really had an even greater impact on our white and Asian scores. It's just not, those scores just are closer to pass advanced than they were to just passive. And if you look at mathematics, it's the same thing. This is the graph that you saw on Thursday night, shows a great drop in the pass rate, but if instead you graph the averaged scale scores, then actually the Asian white dropped more than Black and Hispanic for math as well. And again, if you look at the pass rates for, I mean, the average scale scores for Black and Hispanic, the bottom line, those are all very close to the dividing line between passing and not passing, which is what causes the big drop on the pass rate graph. And when you look at mathematics, there's less of a difference between Asian white than, less of a difference between the Black and Hispanic. The lines are very similar. But again, I mean, we definitely have an achievement gap, it's just that way of reporting, all of our goals are in terms of pass rate, which is a yes/no, rather than what I'd really like to do with a little bit more time is to show how the whole distribution drops. I mean, for each of those average scale scores, I mean, we have students, in no matter which subgroup you look at, performing very highly or performing very poorly, but you could see something similar if we showed a curve and just dropped the whole distribution, which is what actually happened.
This presentation was added today, so I know I refreshed before, so all of these slides are, that's the presentation that's in there. So I don't know if those of you that didn't refresh, if you have the presentation from Thursday or the new one, but all of these slides are in the presentation. Janie, we're going to let them get through everything before we do questions.
Kim wanted me to mention about another change in testing that's happening this year. The state doesn't think it's going to have much of an impact on the pass rates, but for the first time, we're going to have computer adaptive testing in grade six. And the reports will be different, but computer adaptive testing means the students will log on and they will randomly be given an item that's close to where the pass fail difficulty level is. And then depending on how they answer that question, they'll get another question. So if they answer it well, I mean, the GREs are an example of this kind of testing. If they answer it well, they'll get a more difficult question. If they don't get the right answer, they'll get a less difficult question. And so every student will take the same number of items, but they won't be the same items. And so, and, well, they will still have a scaled score, and we'll still have, you know, whether the student failed, passed, or received a pass advanced score. It is going to be more challenging to explain it to our parents who are used to having a raw score, and if I get raw score and you get a raw score, you know, I mean, and if those raw scores are the same, then we get the same average scale score and the same proficiency level. But that won't be true for this test because if I take much easier questions than you do, then my score is going to be lower than yours, even though we answered the same number of questions correctly. This kind of testing's been around for more than 30 years. I mean, it's used for lots of very high-stakes tests, but it will be a challenge. One of the things for our students, most students, I think, will do very well, will adapt to the difference, but in order to have computer adaptive testing, you have to answer every item, and you have to answer all items. So those students who have a hard time answering a question that they don't think they know the answer to, I mean, there will be some students, some groups of students that will have more difficulty with this test. And some of those will take a traditional test instead of the computer adaptive, you know, test, but I think that our biggest challenge is going to be explaining the results to our parents. Math only, grade six, yes, it's grade six math. They had planned to do several grade levels in math, but budget cuts, they were only able to do grade six, and we don't know how quickly it will, how quickly it will expand. The grade six students will be the ones that are a bit challenged because they'll be taking both traditional tests for, you know, in reading, and then they'll also be taking this computer adaptive test, which has different rules, different ways of navigating through the tests. But as I said, in the pilot that they did last year, VDOE says that the scores will be comparable. There's no change in standards, it's change in the type of the test.
All right, so that's the only new information that we have for you. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Janie?
One of the things that might be helpful, I know over the years as tests and test standards and tests, whatever's have been changed, the school board has turned, from time to time, has seen released answers and has received, been able to actually look at tests, because I remember we looked years ago at DRA and how that had changed. Are we ever going to be able to do that? Because as this test has changed, what we hear from the educators is the dramatic difference in how the SOLs or how any of this stuff is going. So will we ever get to see what the kids are actually seeing, so we get a better sense of what's going on?
There are released items on the VDOE website, but not whole tests for the most part because of the item bank.
There's not enough yet.
But there, on VDOE website, you can see, we could give you the links to where to go.
Could you do that?
To see some of those.
And then to show us a little bit of a comparison of what it was before, because it often, being able to see the difference is helpful.
Thank you. Ilyon?
Thank you for the few new slides, which explain should an achievement change gap, that gap hasn't really changed even after the standard has changed. But I want to ask one just clarification, because I just couldn't believe the number I just saw for the white students on that slide between 2006 and 2014. They have dropped that many points. It's way bigger than other groups. Is that? Is it like a 69 versus 20-something for other groups? Wow.
The volatility is the, you know, the change to the new standards, which was, you know, a 50-point drop pretty much between...
I mean, I see, what I see is 69 for white and 20-something for Asian and, yeah. Okay, so those are the right numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Pat?
Thank you. And thank you for following up on that, closing the gap program. I just, could you tell me how to find the research? I guess I am interested to know, like, where the research is on the, so where would I go on the website?
We'll send you the link. We'll send it, obviously, to the entire board, but basically, if you just click on the graphics, it'll take you to the website, and then there's just another click that you have to make, and you'll see resources, materials, things like that there.
Thank you. I didn't try clicking on the circle. I've never seen that before. Thank you, that worked.
Okay.
Okay, so just one other question. On performance-based assessments and projects, I know that this is a big push right now for us because we're changing how we do things. I just wanted to know, what's our, how are we engaging teachers in this process of creating the assessments and projects?
So in anticipation for this, this past summer, knowing that the assessments for those certain tests were going to go away, we had curriculum projects, which is the work of teachers led by our curriculum specialists in those particular areas. I know that our mathematics team for many years now has been engaged in creating tasks, and really, once you get those performance tasks in place to make them into an assessment, it's just how are you going to grade them with A or judge them, give feedback with a rubric? So we've got a lot of work that's been going on with teachers through our curriculum projects. We also have our Best Practices for Teaching and Learning project, where we are bringing school staff to be part of that project team as well. It's a learning process. I think we're seeing that we've gone through over 10 years of learning how to create very good multiple-choice items, and so now we're relearning or getting back into how do you create these good performance assessments?
The Best Practices Project Team that Craig mentioned, you know, they've got several project goals this year, but one of their goals is to develop more kind of anchor-based, performance-based assessments that schools could consider piloting, using, and then also to develop training for schools, optional training for schools, if they wanted to participate in developing their own project or performance-based assessments.
Okay, so that Best Practices Project Team is made up of teachers?
It's got school staff and central office staff. It's predominantly central office staff.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Ted?
So Dr. Oliver, while you were talking about the adaptive computer testing, I decided to consult with our resident educator here, and Pat was explaining that this kind of testing is used for placement. And, you know, it occurred to me that, you know, they might be accidentally stumbling onto something useful here. Because if you gave these at the beginning of the year, wouldn't that be valuable to teachers, right, to find out where the kids are when they show up in the fourth grade or when they show up in the seventh grade? And then the teachers have actual information that they can use to guide their instruction throughout the year. But you'd also, you'd actually still be getting some information about your school system, right, that would be standard.
That's actually very important and key questions. Well, we've been talking about, at least since I've been on board, we've talked about in other places, there are adaptive systems that are excellent tools for teachers, because you can formatively assess students whenever you feel like you need to. And in the interim, it's a great tool, which I don't think computers ever take the place of a great teacher, but it's a great resource to help you either accelerate student learning or, in some cases, maybe enrich student learning with a computer. So you're meeting with a small group of kids, they still have something rigorous and meaningful to do, but at the same time, you can print out a report for a parent. In many states, many of those can also be used to, for measuring student progress, and they can be submitted to the state to meet the need that the state has of checking off that you're doing, you're doing the things you need to be doing. So that's what we, we've been talking about this for some time. Can't we get to a place where we have one system tool that really is a great tool for teachers, but also could take the place of, you know, whatever the state needs to know? And so you're, I think what you described is exactly where we hope that we'll get to eventually in this state with regard to how we align systems.
The computer adaptive tests, too, I mean, much less of a security issue because the kids are not all taking the same items, and the state has always said that one of the reasons, I mean, one of many reasons, that they couldn't do retests at earlier grades was because of the item bank. But if students are taking different items, they should, the likelihood of their being able to have retest... able to, um, have retests is increased as well, they don't need to worry about the security of the items.
Thank you, Ted. Dan?
Well, thank you, that, the, um, the scale analysis was very helpful. In fact, it points out the larger question which, uh, Mr. Moon was highlighting, which is the significant proportional drops by white students compared to, um, really any other, any other category, which is pretty significant. And I assume that that's a function of, of, in general, the function of the drop overall is the issue, the for, the focus on making SOLs a floor versus a mastery level kind of test. And, um, I, I, I strongly object to that and I'm not sure the best way to channel that objection, I, I mentioned, I, to somebody I'd mentioned, I had, I had a, I had breakfast this morning with, with, uh, Chris Bonnet, who's the president of the, of the, uh, state board and spent some time talking about that and, and I frankly didn't realize how, maybe my own ignorance, how, how, um, really divided or, or broken up the leadership is in education in the state of Virginia and you add that to the lack of funding, the substantial lack of funding, I think we're what, forty-second in the country and, and so you, we're really compounding our problems, um, by what we're doing and not doing and, and this is, this is pathetic, I mean, this really is, we ought all be pretty angry about this. Um, I, I don't object to, um, the SOL process, I think it's been an incredibly important one for all of us to, to identify needs and address those needs more effectively than we ever did in the past and, and Richmond Highway corridor kids have been a beneficiary of that in terms of at least additional resources, but, but we need to get, we need to be clear about what it is we truly want our schools to accomplish and this, this, the SOL process troubles me a lot. Computer adaptive tests, you, you said, uh, grade six, um, it started on math this year, I, when I talked to, to Chris, uh, this morning, he said, you know, good luck moving that to the rest of it because he said, there's no money, he said, that's really what's holding things up. I'm just, I'm telling my colleagues as much as anything else that it's not going to happen even though I think it would allow us to do a couple of other things that we've talked about as a board, which is to permit our students to take their SOL tests early, finish it and at least recognize that they know that material and then move them on to other material that they can learn and further, you know, grow and develop themselves. As it is now, they have to sit through the same learning and teaching process even though they already have a mastery of that particular coursework and that's, again, wrong, that's how we're harming our kids and, and I think that absolutely needs to be changed. And, um, the last thing I have is a question, is there any way to tease the poverty and/or ESOL, um, data out of the specific subgroup data that's up there? I mean, I know it's a subgroup, but we have whites, African-Americans, is, when we tease that data out, does it look substantially different? So, you know, obviously African-Americans or Hispanic kids who are not poor or not ESOL, do we see a difference in outcome that would at least give us some confidence that if we focus on this particular area, we can see a similar kind of result and the achievement gap is less? Obviously the achievement gap is more than we have a bigger issue, um, but is there some way to, to look at that data differently?
We, we, um, finished this morning the, um, what, um, Mr. McLaughlin had requested, um, looking at the grade, um, sixth data, I, I wanted to review it before we, um, you know, some of my staff worked on it this morning. Um, we've done some of that, um, work before, um, Dr. Presidio has some of it, but, um, in general, um, there is certainly a difference between poverty and not poverty at every, for every one of the subgroups, but in addition, you see that the, if you compare students who aren't in poverty who are black with students who aren't in poverty who are white, there still exists a difference, sort of similar to what was being said earlier this afternoon. But there is definitely a difference within a subgroup by whether or not the student is in poverty or not and, um, as soon as I've had a chance to review the, the sixth grade data that Ms. McLaughlin was, um, asking for, we'll, um, share it with you.
And I don't know if this is, if, I don't know if this is too much or not, but I'll at least ask the question and then ultimately, Dr. Garza, you judge whether or not it's too much. Part of what I think I'm trying to get to is, is we have schools in poverty with significant numbers of African-American or Hispanic kids.
Mm-huh.
And we look at those schools and recognize the overall result isn't what we want, but we don't really know if we're really meeting the needs of all the kids there because the subgroup data that we have for Hispanics or African-Americans shows that they're not performing at a, you know, sufficient level or whatever, but it doesn't really tell you how within that school, the, what, what's happening with respect to the ESOL or the, uh, the poverty data for, again, the Hispanic and, and African-American population. To me, that gets back to the conversation we sort of had earlier today about the equity issue and, I mean, are we, is this truly something broader that we, on a school-by-school basis, not that you necessarily publish that because you're getting down to a small number of kids, but, but at least in terms for our principals, it would, I think, give them a sense of, you know, how am I doing with the kids who clearly don't have those handicaps? You know, are, am I meeting their needs, you know, fully similar to other subgroups in, in the school?
No, I think you would find at the campus level, I've even sat in on some of our CLTs, um, and there are conversations around how they're using the data and a lot of the dashboards that are available to them, they're looking at the performance of every student, both on SOL performance, but also progress through their, their, um, I'm just drawing a blank, you know, the tests that they develop as a team, a common assessment, thank you, and on their common assessments. So they're measuring progress on a weekly, bi-weekly basis of, of children and students. So they can tell you, if we went to the campus level, they could show you, they could tell you which students are making progress, individual students are making progress, which ones are concerned about, you know, what they're doing about it. So I hope that answers your question, but at school level, they are, because that's how you move the needle.
I know the other data walls, most, the best, best of our schools have data walls that they're monitoring routinely and, and maybe I'm asking a question that's less significant on a campus basis, but I guess to, to a board member, at least a sense of whether or not a school is, I mean, more broadly, uh, addressing the needs of the, of the, of the non-economic disadvantaged population and, because my expectations are their performance should be, which should be very similar, you know, across the board. So you have, because we recognize the poverty, we recognize maybe special education, we recognize ESOL, but, but beyond that, we're looking for similar performance levels on average, you know, with kids in the rest of the school and, and I don't, I don't think that's generally true and I, and I, and I don't know, maybe that's action, not actionable anyways, but, but I just, I guess maybe it's more of a curiosity, I'm not sure.
I think our schools and, and, you know, Dr. Presidio and the team, it's the same standard for every child, right? I mean, we should be having, students should be, all, all of our children should be excelling and so I think they have to look at that.
It's delivering that, the standard.
That's right, that's right.
That's what I, that's what we're...
And we have to provide differentiated programming to help support students so they can get to, to that same standard. So, you know, you all can elaborate on that.
And we have some schools who still don't provide that differentiated programming sufficient to meet all the needs of the kids in that school and I, I have strong feelings about a few schools that still don't do that and, and that's part of my concern that I'm raising, so, thank you.
Just a couple of quick things I would say in response to that. I, I think first and foremost, what we try to do is focus on every single student by name and by need and that's the individual student work that we're doing, but our schools do have the trend data to be able to look at the information, the way we've presented it to the board by, you know, disaggregated by subgroup and, and they are really required to look at it that way and reflect on that in terms of their overall success for student populations and they use that information in terms of writing goals into their school improvement plan. So they really do operate, I think, on, on both levels and I, and I think they do a pretty good job operating on both levels. Where I think our school support structure that I talked a little bit about on Thursday is going to help us, is it's going to help us provide the technical assistance for the schools to actually implement those strategies that they're putting into their plans differently or more effectively than perhaps they've been able to in the past and that's something new and something that we're going to need to, you know, monitor and evaluate the success of, but so far, we're seeing good signs from that, so.
I'm trying to remember what Ryan told me.
So does anybody have a, else have a question before I go to go-backs? Tammy?
Dan just spurred my, my thought process and the questions that he was asking, I, I'm just wondering and I'm addressing you, Mr. Stork directly, do you think it would be helpful and, and I, we, I think we would have to pick, like, because you don't want it for everyone, but if you could disaggregate the data by, you know, poverty measures on all subgroups, you know, on some of these questions, because I think as we go forward in the conversation that we had earlier, I think we have to see really how we as a school system are performing and, and I would have to defer to Dr. Garza and Dr. Presidio, I, I don't want it to be cumbersome, but I, but I do think, you know, because we talk about this opportunity achievement gap, but so much of it we see, particularly in Mr. Storks and I area that we share, so much of it is based on poverty and I know we're being told not to always look at that lens, but I think it's an important data point to look at sometimes because we, we do see that as a factor in our area specifically and so I think that would be, be helpful and if we could kind of team together to figure out, I, I've seen some heads nodding that, around my colleagues that this would be something we would like to see and I'm not exactly sure which ones I would like to see right now, but just some overall, you know, when you talk about these, some of these overall slides that we're looking at, if we can disaggregate it by the...
It sounds like you're starting with sixth grade right now, is that correct?
We have some, yes.
Yes, so we'll show you that first and then you, that can maybe point the way to where else we might need to analyze, is that okay? Yeah.
Right, start, start small and I don't want to have to overextend your work unnecessarily.
No, I appreciate that, if I could, I might add, um, the overall reading and overall math scores because that's information we've produced in the past.
Okay, thank you, thank you, that's what I was looking for, some broad.
And then we can continue to look at that historical information.
Broad areas, all right, good, thank you. So that's the next step for sure.
Are my next steppers okay over there? Okay, so we're going to get data on this, maybe actually just have Sloan state rather than me reinterpret it, is that okay?
I, I can try. What we're going to try to do is produce achievement gap data based on free and reduced lunch or poverty status, uh, for overall reading and for overall math performance and then we're going to complete the data request to do the same thing at the sixth grade that we're looking at already.
And in all subgroups, not just...
We're going to, we're going to include the, the poverty subgroup to that.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So that'll be follow-on, in, a follow-up information that the board will get, it'll be in a follow-up.
I, I just want to make sure they captured it on the go-back.
Okay.
That, because part, the two pieces that I was looking for is, for example, African-American, the poverty and non-poverty, okay, I just want to be sure we're talking about some of that, okay, thanks.
Okay, so I've lost track, so we're done with that one, so now I'm going to do my go-backs if nobody else wants a first turn. Okay, Patty and then Ted.
Want to make sure that we're, we're just talking about what's been presented right here, right? At this point, is that right? Okay, okay. And this is a very specific question, hopefully easy to answer, on some of these charts, you, you mentioned that the VGLA is available for the LEP students. Can you just explain that to us just so we understand that? And it's only the LEP, it used to be special ed students as well, right? And so that's a paper and pencil test as opposed to the online and are they allowed to retake it? Is there coaching involved, you know, is, is there any, anything that we need to understand about, you know, why have you pointed out VGLA is available for LEP?
Uh, the Virginia Grade Level Alternative is a portfolio assessment and, um, teachers collect information on the students for an entire year. Uh, each piece of evidence that's put into the portfolio is supposed to be done under testing conditions, meaning not as a group and not with, um, with coaching, um, so it, but it is a portfolio assessment, um, we collect them all together, score them, uh, and then ten percent of them goes, go to VDOE, um, where they're rescored to check the reliability of the scoring that, that we've done and our, if anything, Fairfax tends to score maybe a little bit higher, harder than, um, more difficult, harder than, um, what VDOE says, most of our scores, if they're overturned, um, go from, go up.
And it used, used to include the students with disabilities, right? But not anymore, is that right?
Uh, less and less, so.
And I know that's a huge amount of work, I've seen the folks who sit in the conference room with just stacks and stacks, it's a huge endeavor, so, um, just wanted to acknowledge that, thank you.
Okay, so now I'm going to go to go-backs, I have Pat, uh, Janie and Ted. Pat?
Thanks, um, I just wanted to follow on also to Dan's point, um, and when we talk about, um, sort of what happens in the CLT meetings when teachers are disaggregating the data and looking at every kid, Darrell Craig, I don't think she's still here, is she? Um, she tells, well, she tells a story, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but she tells a story from a few years ago when she was going around to CLT meetings at the schools and kind of being a fly on the wall, watching these conversations and she noticed that teachers feel comfortable talking about poverty, they feel comfortable talking about language, but they don't feel comfortable talking about race and that, that's my own experience as well in those meetings. When you disaggregate and you're just looking at race, you don't know what to say, like, why is that happening? We don't know. And so I think, you know, it's, just to say that, you know, it's, it's part of the agenda for the CLT meetings, I don't think, I don't think is enough to say that we're really addressing it, um, and that's why I think, I, it is, it's, it's hard to talk about, that's why I do think we need to lead, this meshes with our earlier conversation and Darrell brings that up because it was her impetus for putting in the cultural competency training, which, you know, and she based that on her experiences out in the field with the teachers. So I don't think we're getting to those systemic answers or the trend answers, um, at, at that level of the CLT meetings and the teachers, but...
Janie and then Ted.
First, I want to go back and just thank you again for the, for the other, um, graphs showing the, the scale scores, that's, that is very, very important and, and it would be so nice if other people understood sort of this forest, I should, it's jungle that we're in with all of the tests and the scores. Um, and it, so my question is, under the old SOLs and under our old goals, we were, we looked at target improvements for lots of kids and groups and however we were, so that obviously for some children to, to catch up, they had to advance more each year in order to get to where we wanted them to go. So it's sort of the growth model, so you're also looking at growth. And knowing that we are probably not only in Virginia, but in Fairfax County and nationally and certainly what we are pushing for is a whole different look, a whole different highway to go down with all of this stuff. So on the one hand, the fact that, that we really do look at the achievement for every single child, I think, is clearly a very important piece for us because then no matter whatever is going on, we are still focusing on every individual child. But from the state's perspective, whatever we're going to be required to do in this sixth grade, um, new test, are we expecting changes in cut scores? Are we expecting, I mean, where, are we going to see the, how much more of the goalpost is going to be moved and we, you know, build ourselves on one issue and we don't know politically where they're going to go, but that's such a frustrating, you know, it's, it's really the constant wheel for the gerbil, I mean, where are we going?
For this particular, um, change, computer adaptive testing at grade, um, six, the, the standards have changed, have not changed, the standards are the same and so the state is saying that the, um, scores will be, um, comparable and that we won't see a great, you know, change in the scores and they're saying that based on the pilot that they did last year. It, it, it does still, um, we'll have to see what happens. I think we will have more students who, um, whose, special ed students whose IEPs say that they should take a, um, traditional test rather than the, um, computer adaptive, um, test. I, I don't think we're going to see a great change in the, in the scores, but we'll have to see what happens.
In other words, you, in other words, okay, in standards, in other words, you're not going to necessarily see a change in the goalpost again?
Well, I am not sure, I actually have a call to the state on Friday scheduled because the change in removing the SOLs at third, fifth, sixth and seventh will drastically change our results, so how the state is going to counter that as well as, um, how they're going to, you know, they had a limited pilot, so there's a big communication with parents over the new math as well as there's a big change for students in taking this kind of test and I agree that it's been given and it's a good, it's a good kind of test, but on one kind of test, we've been coaching students to, if you don't know it, just go on and, and then go back and mark that you want to go back to that, they can't do that anymore. So they're going to take the reading test, which is one kind of test, and the math test, which is a different, so we're going to coach them one way on... one test and one way on another test. So I am going to ask those questions at the state level of, how are you going to let us know how you decide to use different, um, a reformulated kind of test as well as a framework when you remove others? Because it's, it's not the same. And we're going to look at what it might look like tomorrow at LT with Kathy taking out the SOL test from this year.
Right. I feel sorry for the kids. I mean, and, and they worked so hard, obviously the teachers, but my goodness.
But the, your broader question was, you know, kind of what's ahead, are there going to be additional changes? I think the answer to that is yes.
Yeah, yeah.
The fact that we have this SOL innovation committee, I think a lot will likely change. Now, we do have Dr. Dockry scheduled to present to the board where the SOL innovation committee, sometime, I can't remember the date. Pam, you have to help me.
January.
January, one of the January work sessions. So she'll be able to provide you all in-depth kind of detail about this.
And one good thing was that the state board removed their, they were about to make a whole set of recommendations, and they decided to not go forward with those while the SOL committee worked, which was a good thing.
Great, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have Ted and Dan.
So, Dr. Garza, when you were talking about what happens at the campus level, I had a thought that probably is perfectly obvious to the educators. Um, but I was thinking that, you know, the, there's a very real fear that drove SOLs and No Child Left Behind, and that is that you lose track of each individual student, right? And it seems to me that the, if, if we're trying to get rid of SOLs, which I am, um, there's still the accountability piece. And I think that what we, what we want to be able to do is go to the state and go to the federal government and say, look, you can walk into this school, you can see the data that we're collecting on each student, you can see the process that the principal and the educators are following to make sure that this student is getting an education. Seems to me that that kind of accountability is something that, I mean, we, we would, we would more than welcome that, right?
Dan?
I meant to mention this before, and we, I asked a couple of questions at the, uh, at our meeting, and I wanted to kind of give you at least a chance to think about it. And I talked to Dr. Garza this morning about the gap, and I, and you did a nice job of presenting what some of that gap is. Have you all given it any more thought or any other kind of follow-up to that? What is, you know, why? Why the gap? And what, is there some way of breaking that down into maybe some smaller subsets that could be attacked or at least addressed? The scale scores clearly help a lot because it, it shows it's a little bit different than what it looked like on the SOL side of that.
You all may answer this a different way. I will tell you, um, that, that the way I see our schools doing it now, when I visit our schools, and the way I think they should be doing it, is they're looking at individual objective and which students are not understanding certain objectives and going back and reteaching those particular objectives. So they look at it from a student perspective, but also from a, um, curriculum's perspective, and that is, you know, is our instruction not well-aligned to help ensure success with students at the, you know, individual target, uh, level? So I don't know if you would answer that the same way, Dr. Presidio, but that's-
I would. I mean, I think that's critically important. And I mean, I think it kind of falls under the category of academic support here, but it's really under the idea of, you know, good instruction and support on a daily basis. But I mean, that's why when you look at the research, it's a mul, the, the achievement gap's a multifaceted problem. And that's why I think that we need to be thinking about this, you know, this issue on a lot of other fronts, too. I mean, we've got to get kids off to an early start, so ready to learn, and preschool's got to be there. We've got to communicate high expectations and, and systems of support to students on a daily basis. So, I mean, it's a very complex issue. And I mean, we, I think we really need to be addressing, you know, all six of these drivers if we're going to be able to effectively eliminate the gap.
There's really no way to, to tease out parts of that that are, seem to be more weighted in this area or that area? I know, I, I understand on an individual student basis, maybe you, again, you can see that growth or not.
Reading. Reading.
Reading, yeah, sure.
Reading and literacy. To me, that translates, translates across any, any content area.
Yeah.
Well, that, literacy, that includes writing. Uh, I, I think those are the foundational skills. And, and I thought it was interesting that our gap seems to be larger in reading than it was in mathematics.
Yeah.
Did you notice that?
Yeah, I did.
So I think, you know, I think that's the one thing I think would, that I would say translates across. Um, I was just going to say, if, if I'm the last person, am I the last person? Okay. Um, Dan's question last night prompted me over the weekend to go back and reread some of the research literature on the achievement gap.
Karen?
Yes.
Just wait, because I got a finger next to you there that wanted a quick turn, and then I'll close with you.
I have one since, the reason I think our reading is lower than our math is because our kids don't write enough. Say it, say it before.
No, no argument for me.
Say it again.
We're working on that. Okay. Um, but it is, you know, the research literature is, there's no one silver bullet. I think that's clear. I think some of the things have been talked about in terms of these drivers in the work, you know, pre-K, rigor of the curriculum, teacher quality, all of those things are, you know, mobility of students, all of that, and making sure that our programs are well, well-aligned. But some, some things that I, I'd forgotten about, I hadn't thought about in a while, that I thought were particularly pertinent today because of the earlier conversation that was had with the county, and then this one, beyond what we do in the educational setting, low birth rate, access to quality healthcare, were key drivers in a lot of the literature I read, and then food insecurities. So in terms of what, what we can do with our county partners, I think those are some areas that, you know, early childhood, access to quali, quality healthcare at, you know, at early age, and then the, the food insecurities. Where do children find, you know, have food and access to food on, during holidays, during the summer, that kind of thing. So, thank you.
I appreciate the information you provided to the board. I, I think it is difficult sometimes when we get the high level of information and then you don't have enough context. Um, so I think that was very helpful. And I do think it's hard because you're getting the high-level, system-wide context totally in reading or totally in math. And, and sometimes it's easy to lose sight of what's happening in the individual school with the individual teacher with the kids, and they're right on their radar. You know, so as we have these discussions, we need to make sure that we set that context of, here's one look, but don't lose sight of what's happening every day in the classroom. Um, if we could see the, uh, follow-up part of this, with, our next steps are really, I think, follow-up information. And then, um-
And then finally, I just wanted to reiterate, thanks to the team. We have great people, uh, working all throughout FCPS, and these, these wonderful folks are a fine example of the great people we have, uh, here. And so thank you, all the folks back here, and then those at the table for your hard work on this.
That was a quick turnaround to bring us more information, so we appreciate that.
Oh, while, while they're looking, pulling up next steps, last year, there's something else I was going to bring up. Last year, the, uh, the pre-K group, what's it called? We have a committee on pre-K. School board, school board committee, you know, they present on, present Mara.
FESEP?
Yeah. FESEP. They did some analysis that looked at how well students are, are doing in later years. I'd like to see that again and see how this might influence, you know, the students that were in our FESEP program, how well they were doing later on. As we really talk about the achievement gap, I think that would really help us convey how important this pre-K issue is. So, um, I think they did a lot of that good work last year. We just needed to update it. I'd like to see where we are on that.
Okay, so those were the three things I found that we wanted links to information. And then the, the other information we talked about with the gap and the economic status and those pieces. Did you have something, Brian? Okay, so, um, we're going to stop this one. We're going to start the next one at four o'clock that's on time. I urge you to get up and move for a few minutes, okay? That's healthy for all of us. Thank you for your report. I used to teach elementary school head.